All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order. First item of business is the pledge of allegiance, if you'll join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, tonight is a workshop meeting for the board. We won't be taking any votes or action on any items tonight. Tonight's meeting is going to be devoted to the presentation of the facilities assessment, master plan and recommendations. The folks here from the consulting firms have already made detailed presentations of this to the facilities committee of the board. This was a meeting to provide a more high-level sort of summary position to the entire board. Unfortunately, in the last hour or so, I got a whole bunch of emails from board members saying they couldn't make it. However, those of us who are here would very much like to hear what you have to say. And so, I'm sure with the news media and the public, so even though we don't have a quorum, we're going to proceed with the presentation because we only need a quorum in order to take votes, and we're not going to be voting on anything tonight. So, Dr. Adamowski, I'll turn it over to you to start and introduce us to the plan, and then we'll proceed.
Sure. So, as you pointed out, Chairman Lyons, the facilities committee chaired by Mr. Barbous has done a detailed review of this report and the recommendations. This comes in three segments, basically. The first is an assessment of every one of our school buildings in terms of what it's had, what it needs, what the future holds for it relative to continuing as a viable school. Second is our enrollment projections and utilization. Those have been very comprehensively done and in a very detailed fashion. And as you all know, this has been a blind spot for the Norwalk Public Schools. We have not had accurate enrollment projections to this point. We were not able to project how many students would come from apartments, where the student growth was actually coming from, and how to be able to address it. And then the third section of the report, which will be the primary focus tonight, although you'll get some information and background on the first two sections, primary focus will be the recommendations, options and recommendations for how to address the goals of the report, which include our ability to have enough capacity to serve the children of Norwalk over the next 10 years, how many schools we need in order to do that, which schools need renovation is new, which schools can be maintained through capital improvements, and options on where we need to build, what is basically the equivalent of seats of four of three new schools. One of which we need now because we're at 100% capacity, one of which we'll need in another five years, and another which we'll need in 10 years to replace the portables, in which we currently have 400 students. So, very exciting plan, one that is long overdue, but one that will be so important to the future of our school system going forward. So, I'm going to turn this to John Ireland, who headed our consultant team here. Many of you know him, who have from some of the prior work he has shared, and this is intended to be kind of the summary of it, the synopsis of it, and position the board to make some of the policy decisions that you will need to make around these recommendations. So, John.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Adamowski. I'll introduce tonight. My name is John Ireland. I'm an architect with the firm of Silver Petriselli. With me tonight is Michelle Miller, also an intern architect with Silver Petriselli, Ryan Chumalowski, who is a landscape architect with Malone and McBroom, and Mike Zubba, also with Malone and O'Grue, who heads up all of their demographic. I'll talk more about the enrollment. So, we began this, and I apologize, we thought we'd move up here and present to our back and try to turn and make sure that everybody can follow. We began about a year ago. In fact, we had our first committee meeting in March of last year. So, we had eight committee meetings. As Dr. Adamowski said, we last met with the building committee of the Board of Ed, and had three presentations there. So, we're breaking this up into three parts. We're going to give you a little bit of an overview of the first two parts, and then we're going to dive into the recommendations. In short, tonight, our recommendations are, first, to acknowledge that your schools are full in that capacity, and in many cases, overcapacity. Creating a brand-new pre-K program, and I say "brand-new" because it doesn't exist at every school, but make sure that there are at least two pre-K classrooms at every one of the elementary schools, and potentially some of these new schools. No portable classrooms. I think everybody supports the idea that when we're said and done in 10 years, there'll be no more portable classrooms here in the city of Norwalk. The growing population, and Mike's going to tell you more about it, is roughly, right now, about 750 seats each short, and we'll talk about how we arrived at that number, what does 750 seats mean. Creating equity in the educational program, both equity in the schools and then on the educational side, certainly not part of our work, but creating equality across the schools. The 21st century learning environment, again, more has to do with how you're going to move forward with these schools, and choice across the district. So, we're also going to talk about a brand-new pre-K 8, and that does not exist here in the city of Norwalk as we speak. So, that is a new recommendation. And then finally, it is our intent to approve all the schools. As a brief footnote, we previously took a look at Briggs High School. We made a recommendation both to the building committee and to the board about moving forward with the Briggs High School, now called the Pathway Academy, Norwalk Pathway Academy at Briggs. And one of the first steps there is certainly looking at that location and determining the final location. So, capital needs. Michelle's going to describe in detail kind of the process, and we've got about 10 slides and of what it took to put that together. You have about, in the 16 schools, so there's 12 elementary schools we looked at and four middle schools, a million square feet of school space, spread out, and Ryan's going to talk more about spread out around 240 acres. We're going to talk a lot about benchmarking, and so we'll identify, we go to the state website, there's a lot of information, a lot of school, both square footages, enrollment, site sizes, all the way down to going to the classroom and the specialty spaces. We'll compare the city's schools as they are today and as they are envisioned with those state standards, because one of the key pieces of this process is the ability to make sure that the city of Norwalk qualifies for the maximum, both reasonable and fair reimbursement from the state of Connecticut. So, we start that now in this master plan and in this planning phase. For instance, your schools are approximately 20% smaller than the state average, both on the elementary school and on the middle school. So, some of the schools are smaller. Age of schools, on average, are somewhere between four to 12 years older than the average across the state. We're going to talk a lot about the capacity. State schools, on average, are at about 25% underutilized. So, when you start to talk about a population here of 11,000, including the high school, you can see that's a significant number. Here in the city of Norwalk, you are 100, 105, 110, Mike's going to give you exact numbers, but well over 100% full when you compare it to the state standards. So, it gives you an early indication of why the portables are here and why some of these schools are at capacity and beyond capacity. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Michelle, who's going to tell you how we came to that conclusion. I'm going to hand you back.
So, Ryan and I both had a separate team. I had engineers with me, Ryan had some civil engineers and landscape architects, and they go out and review the sites while we go out and review the buildings. Then we put together these matrices for each school. This happens to be an example of Brookside, and we'll put line items of the issues that we see and ways to remedy them and a cost associated with that. And then we also rank them on a scale from 1 to 4, with 1 being the most critical and need. And Ryan and his team use a slightly different matrix, but come up with the same type of information. For each school, we do that, along with associated floor plans and site plans, and we've compiled that into a book on all 16 major schools, and it's about 350 pages. So, we didn't want to go into too much detail with that, as we know we'd be here all night. So, here's an example that we just kind of put together. We chose Cranberry. So, what we've done with every school is we break it up into its program, yellow being the classrooms, the darker being media center, darker yellow being support. Here's an example of a cafeteria, gym, auditorium, shared, so you see all those colors there. We also give you some building information about how big it is, when it was built, population. And then we also grab that state data about the information of the financial costs that you guys have already invested in these buildings and put that together. Our next slide shows you three different examples of projects that we feel are priority projects. Cranberry needs a window replacement, a boiler replacement, and we come up in total, our ones and twos in a number, so Cranberry has 1.2 million in needs of priorities. And then altogether, it needs 4.3 million. So, we go through and do this for every school. And now, here's Ryan's site.
Good evening, thanks for coming. In terms of the site, we looked at every site in different categories. So, we looked at the physical condition to tell how good the condition is on each school. So, we looked at roadways, roadways, pavements, curving, sidewalks, bus and parent circulation, whether you have a separate bus and parent drop-off, which is critical these days with the amount of drop-off going on in schools. We looked at the outdoor physical education, so the athletic fields, basketball courts, tennis courts. We looked at playgrounds, lighting on the site, is adequate or not, and ADA accessibility. So, the way these sheets in this big report were put together, you can see very faintly here, there's outlined red areas, and those were our work areas, which reflect, are reflected in this column over here. So, in the main entrance driveway, we have all those categories that I just talked about, and gave them a ranking, 1 to 5, and came up with a projected cost to reconstruct, repair, bring out today's standards and today's state standards as well.
Here's an example of some summary sheets that we put together. For each school, we'll have an architectural one and then a site one, and we put all that information, you know, to try to summarize exactly what we noted in these buildings. So, it's a good point to refer to if you want to kind of get a quicker overview of it all. So, we did that for all 12 of your elementary schools.
Sure. So, all of those capital needs, then, are brought together, and the matrix here shows the darker color is the building needs and the lighter color are the site needs. Right now, those totals of the elementary schools, about 53 million, so about 53 million in capital needs in total, and they're right now ranked from the greatest need or the most amount of money that needs to be invested in each of these schools down to the least amount of money. And you're going to see this consistently, and we're going to talk a lot about which ones come first, where to prioritize, and sequence these schools as we move forward. So, the elementary schools, about 54 million. At the middle schools, again, there are four middle schools totaling about, on average, 100,000 square feet, sitting on about 90 acres or about 22 acres each. The middle schools, in this order, total about 24 million. We're going to later talk about money you've already invested, but for now, again, as Michelle and Ryan described, we rated all of the schools between 1 to 4, 1 to 5, and then assigned a cost for each one of those improvements, and that is the capital needs in a nutshell. There they are on the middle school, and then here they are in total. So, in total, there are 77,400,000 in capital needs, and of that, probably somewhere in about 16% of that would probably be eligible for state reimbursement. Capital needs are typically not reimbursed by the state because their thinking is that you will have to do that anyway, you'll have to maintain buildings. However, certain things like roof replacement every 20 years is fully eligible at your reimbursement rate, and your reimbursement rate currently is 32.5%. So, how does that work? If the roof were to cost you $1 million, the state would reimburse you $325,000 for that roof. So, again, it takes a good chunk of that from the state tax dollars, it's really all of our tax dollars, and it's eligible for all the towns and cities, is returned here to the city of Norwalk. So, again, we're going to talk more about that, we're conscious of that. It's a well-known process. I will say it's constantly in a state of flux. So, what we might perceive one day as the correct path to reimbursement may suddenly change. I'm sure you've all read, or if you have, haven't, but read a lot about the state budget process, and each year when the schools come up for legislative action on the total school budget. So, capital needs generally aren't reimbursed, some of them are. It's the ongoing maintenance, it's code considerations, it's all of those issues moving forward. So, we're going to kind of keep that as a placeholder and move to the next phase on the demographic enrollment. Mike?
Thanks, John. One of our workshops with the building committee as well as the working group, we're going through and really understanding where Norwalk is going to be, not next year, but really 10 years from now. That's the nature of a 10-year master plan. So, what we do is we go through a pretty extensive process of looking at demographics, housing, economic conditions, not only for the city as a whole, but also each individual neighborhood within the city to be able to get those school enrollment projections. And with this project in particular, we wanted to pay particular attention to new housing developments as they've come online, and I'll touch that, touch on that in about two slides from now. So, just keeping at about 15,000, looking at some of the highlights. Norwalk overall, as a community, is projected to have some pretty strong growth over the next 30 years. We've used different demographic models from the state, looking at about 3.2% projection in the next 10-year window. Also, we rely on a lot of census data, that's the chart you're going to see on the lower right. Looking at the population composition, looking at Norwalk as it begins to age and place, Norwalk has a fairly high median age that has increased over the last 10 years, no surprise, a lot of Fairfield County has increased. And then we want to be able to get into a lot of our birth analysis, because truly, what is the best predictor for kindergarten in a community like Norwalk, and is looking at births five years ago. We've done a fair amount of analysis on that, really trying to correlate those births that we don't have using various regression models to have a full 10 years of very reliable projections. Taking a look at housing, housing is always a key driver, especially in Fairfield County. We know we went through the Great Recession in 2007, 2008. As you can see on the chart on the right, we've had some, sorry, Ryan, we've had pretty sharp decline overall in housing sales. It's been experienced in many communities, not only in Connecticut, but throughout the nation. But I think what we're looking at now is this slow and steady recovery. You can see I have a little red bubble on the chart. Overall, the number of housing sales, and these aren't the family transfers, we've weeded those out of this, we're seeing an increase overall, and with that increase, it helps to drive increase in enrollments as well. What we also wanted to look at was each of the individual neighborhood schools across the board and look at what type of housing stock students come from, to get a real good understanding of, you know, there's different drivers for predominantly rental neighborhood versus a neighborhood that's single-family, homeownership, to be able to best pinpoint those individual demographics, so we can get accurate school-by-school projections that could then feed our utilization analysis. I'll pause here for a minute, because this is really one of the key pieces that we've utilized. You know, we've already in the paper, all of the housing that's going on, there's a lot of applications, a lot of permits. What you would typically rely on is Rutgers produces multipliers for many communities and throughout the Northeast Connecticut being one of them, where you can then go through this table and identify about how many school-aged children you would have generated from different types of development. So, based on bedroom splits, based on whether it's market-grade housing, whether it's luxury housing, whether it's affordable housing, the owner or renter occupied. We didn't want to rely solely on that, so what we did was, working with the planning department, we spent a lot of time in their office, combing through a lot of records. We actually pulled records for 99 different developments that have occurred over the last 30 years, paying a lot of attention to the last 10 years, looked at 5,700 housing units, and then tied to that, the type of unit, type of bedroom split, as well as the number of children that are currently being generated or coming out of those housing units over the last five years in order to generate our Norwalk-specific multipliers, and we did some comparison between those. So, we were able to then add to our enrollment projections the number of students that we can expect to occur at different target years, based on when the, when a lot of the developments that have been planned, approved, and permitted in the community are going to come online, and there is a fairly, sorry to be on my, there's a large number of units here with different target years, different horizons, as well as different student generations that we wanted to ensure that we're capturing. We didn't want to go ahead and prepare projections without this information, because once these are built, certificates of occupancies are issued, and families move in, and school-aged children are generated there, then we would already be behind the number then, and we would be planning for something that would catch us by surprise, so we didn't want to have any surprises as part of that. Our typical methodology for doing school enrollment projections is really cohort survival. It's the one that the state recommends for any school construction grant project. However, we've noted over the last few years, especially in a changing economy where you go through a boom, then a recession, now a slow recovery, that you have to begin to make modifications to that if you want to have accurate projections. So, they rely on our enrollment history, and this is just a little snapshot of, you know, the direction that the enrollments have been occurring in Norwalk over the last few years. For this project, we've developed three sets of projections. Those three sets of projections are governed by different assumptions. Our low model is governed by almost a double dip or very stagnant economy, no recovery at all. This would be if you had no housing development on the market or nothing on the horizon. So, that whole chart I showed you with all those units, if that wasn't happening, we'd probably go towards that lower model, a moderate, which really just takes the last or the first couple of years of the housing recovery and extrapolates that. And then we have our third model, which is our higher projection model, which accounts for all of that housing growth, not only what's being built now, but what's permitted and approved for the future, as well as the strengthening housing market and the strengthening unemployment rate. So, that's the one that we feel is the better model overall going forward. Looking at all three of our projection models, we only have a range of about 6.5%, I think, over the 10-year horizon. So, they all correlate very well, but there's some little nuances in there. I provided our detailed projections as well as grouping by grade, so that's kind of what we began planning around. You're going to see overall in the model that we're presenting tonight, which we have all for utilization, based on the high projection model, has a slight little dip to it, but then there's a little bit of recovery. But overall, over a 10-year period, you're looking at a very modest 3.5% growth, so not something too alarming. For lack of a better term, you know, tying those students or those demographics, those projected enrollments to the building is very important. John had made a mention earlier that looking at through the state dataset, they have this wealth of information on being able to draw comparisons between what the state sees the capacity of the buildings at versus how many students are in the buildings, and you have for each school and school system in the state. We rely on a slightly different model, but it's very similar results, where through the work of going through the buildings, assessing each and every classroom, identifying those total full-size instructional rooms, as well as using your classroom loading guidelines, 18 for pre-K, 22 for K2, 24 for 3-5, we're able to come up with a functional capacity for each of the buildings, and then look at the number of students that are in the buildings today and see exactly where that target matches up. As you can see on the chart, there's many of the, many of the school buildings are overcapacity and under this deployment model. This is the one where we've gone through and ensured that every classroom in every school, as Michelle will talk about later, has five classrooms for specials and resource rooms, as well as removal of portable classrooms. And all of that was vetted with the building administrators in the fall, as they began their planning and having classrooms. So, they were able to take our field notes and say, yep, this is a first-grade classroom row, we had to add one, so, you know, it's current to the 15, 16 school year. What we wanted to do was be able to tie those projections for master planning purposes to really look at the direction that the space needs are going. Starting at 15, 16, in year one, we have a deficit of about 610 seats for the elementary alone. We have a slight positive for the middle schools, but overall, a deficit of just under 600. Now, that ebbs and flows as you have these bubbles of students come in and out of the system, but overall, it's pretty consistent when we end our projection horizon in '25, '26. One of our greatest needs is in our elementary seats. We have a deficit there of about 900 seats, where we have a slight positive in the middle school, but that's not to say the middle school throughout the entire 10 years is going to have plenty of space. It's not really the case. They hover right around 100%. So, overall, the range is about 108 to about 110% capacity for the entire system.
So, we're taking all of that information, I'm just going to go back one. We're taking both of those data sets, now those are the capital needs, and then the demographics and enrollment projections, and saying, now what? How do you proceed and how do you go to a utilization phase? How do you arrive at some recommendations? One of the first things is to all agree that let's get rid of the portables. Second agreement is let's put two pre-K classrooms in every school. Again, Dr. Adamowski and others on the committee were very clear about the concept that if there's a pre-K classroom, A, it better prepares children as students, and B, it better prepares the school, that individual school, for those students. So, rather than spreading those around, having a pre-K program in each school in the long run is part of the recommendation. So, get rid of the portables, those will go away, address the seat deficit, the shortage of locations. And then, tonight is really focused on how do we do that and how do we create that equality across all of the schools. So, one of the ways is to now look at those same capital needs. So, in front of you, there was 77,400,000 in capital needs, and that's still represented on the blue towers, if you will, in blue colors in site and building, but now we've overlaid that orange-red color, is the amount of investment that the city of Norwalk has made in these schools over the last 30 years, and it's about a gross number of 112 million in the schools over the last 30 years. So, on the elementary side, it's about 76 million of the 16 schools. So, that's about an average of 6.4 million in each of the schools over that 30 years, or about 2.5 million per year over 30 years. So, again, another matrix for us to look at to begin to consider which schools should come first in this process and which schools have the greater need. And I think one of the things that is interesting to us is that the schools that already have a considerable investment are starting to show a lower capital needs. Not in all cases, you know, money has been spent on these when you compare them to the lower amounts spent over time, but in general, the more money you put into the schools, it lowers the overall capital needs. We're going to talk about two other processes. We've talked about capital needs, repair, replacement, and some of the state projects, but there's two other clear paths you could take with state projects. Extensions, alterations, and very defined educational specifications to create projects that are put before the state for school construction grants. The other is a fairly new one, and it is defined as the renovation process. The renovation process says that you have to improve the entire school, you have to do just about everything, specifically mechanical systems, electrical systems, the finishes, the technology, everything within the school. If you do that, you need to bring it up to somewhere between a 20- to 50-year standard. So, it's a fairly onerous process. It's also not an easy process for the state to approve, and the reason is it then maximizes the reimbursement. So, if you were to do a school project, remember the example of the million-dollar roof at about 32.5% of the entire project? So, if it were a $20 million project, 32.5% of that $20 million would be fully eligible under the renovation, whereas the first path, the extensions and the alterations, it roughly is about somewhere between 20% to 25% of your total. So, again, a higher reimbursement, but a harder project and a more of an investment. So, again, we'll talk more about it as the time comes and as we look at each one of these, and which ones do we recommend? time comes and as we look at each one of these and which ones, uh, do we recommend for alterations, extension, which ones do we recommend for renovations? This is one of the methods we use, the capital needs and the overall investment. Uh, the next slide is the middle schools of that hundred and twelve million, about thirty-five million is in the, uh, middle schools, about eight point nine per school or about one point two million over a thirty-year time span. So, what's that? Let's get this one here. Okay. So, yeah, utilization after, right.
Yeah, this is just a simplified version of it and we wanted to insert it now at this point in time before we got into the recommendations. So as we begin working our way through the different options, um, we want to be able to test how those options were best meeting the seat deficit. You know, our goal as part of this was to be able to erase the seat deficit, being able to do it in the most cost-effective manner, as well as to provide seats at the right times in order to ensure that, you know, we were being respective of the elementary as well as the middle school, um, projections and being able to get the infusion of space to line up. So you'll see several of these charts in the simplified version throughout each option to be able to see exactly what those additional buildings, um, whether it's new construction, whether it's reno, whether it's an addition onto a building, um, how that infusion of seats best chips away at that, at that seat deficit over time. Okay, I'll do this one. Oh, as part of any master planning process, it's important to draft a vision. So the vision was put together by the administrators and this is really looking at what are they trying to get out of this. And what jumps out at me, I'm not going to sit here and, and, and read the entire statement, but it's a great vision statement in that, um, you know, it's a comprehensive master plan. It's a plan that takes into account not only the students that are here today, the students that are going to be there ten years down the road, is being, um, respective of the capacities at the building, the educational plans, the educational goals that the district has, what they want to achieve. And that's where John mentioned, you know, the addition of now two pre-K to each building. Um, but most importantly, the finances. So we're going to spend a lot of time talking about the different costs, talking about the different reimbursement levels, talking about capital needs versus additions and, and alt, or extensions and alterations versus, uh, new construction. Um, and all of this was done through a data-driven process, um, where we've worked with the administrative team, worked with the building committee, be able to go back and forth on these different options to present the best recommendations that we have tonight. And John will touch on the goals and the goals are really those individual tasks that we're really trying to accomplish. Even though we have this overarching vision of where Norwalk Public Schools wants to go educationally, we have all of these separate goals, all these separate areas that we think are key improvements in order to get there and see this vision through fruition.
Thanks, Mike. So which site, so we've got these sixteen schools laid out there. We, we understand where the needs are. We understand the investment. Um, how do we begin to evaluate each of those? So we're going to talk about a process that creates an idealized school to school. Um, one of the things that I think is, is fascinating about this is this creation of the pre-K to eight. And the concept there is if I were to send my child to the pre-K eight program, they would stay with their cohorts. They would stay through the entire school system in hopefully my neighborhood and to my neighborhood school and then proceed through the high school. Again, with the same collective group of cohorts of friends and fellow students teaching each other, uh, helping each other with the educational process. Um, and that's a new concept. Um, it exists in some locations and Dr. Adamowski can certainly describe those better than we. But I was fascinated with this creation of a new approach to putting these schools together. So again, we'll build an idealized model and try to figure out where does it best apply here in the city. Um, that can be an intra-district, um, we're not going to talk about inter-district magnets. I think at the state level right now, there's a moratorium on inter-district magnets and certainly the funding is very controversial. Um, and so we're talking about intra-districts. In other words, magnets within the city. So, and a choice within those schools. And you see that here in the goals. Um, we've talked enough about eliminating the portables and I'm sure there's no argument there. Um, Michelle's going to describe in the floor plan, um, that some of the schools have a combined, I think we use Cranberry as an example, a combined cafeteria, gathering space, auditorium and gymnasium. And while it's not a core educational space, it certainly is a part of the day-to-day flow of that educational process. And if we're trying to build schools that are attractive to everyone, then they all had to have a similar level of attraction as far as the use of the facility. So we'll talk a little bit more about that. Um, Norwalk Pathway Academy of Bridges, I think ultimately is integrated into this process. Um, Brian's going to talk, if we see some of the examples about the site and how it improved both the athletic facilities, the play facilities. And ultimately, this is about providing that twenty-first century educational environment in a safe and secure set of schools. Um, in brief, the committee, when we got together, and we're certainly not going to go into it tonight, acknowledges that the School Safety Infrastructure Council in the state of Connecticut has made recommendations to school safety. And so there've been discussions, there've been an executive session and rest assured that that is a part of this process as well. Certainly the master plan includes incorporating the most current thinking in school safety. So not only is it about education, but it's about the safety and security of that education. So with that, Michelle is going to talk about some of these idealized programs. And I think, before I turn over, the question is why? Why would you create an ideal? And I think you're going to see, as you take that ideal and you start to apply it to each one of these sites and each one of these options, it becomes very clear which ones fit better and which ones work better.
So to start, we kind of start with a diagram, looking at the big picture, the relationship of spaces. We're saying that administration's at the front door. You want to enter there and keep your public spaces to the front. Then we want our educational wing, including the pre-K, our media center and our support spaces. So this is kind of the, the big idea. And, um, then we look at the amount of students. We want to set up a pre-K through five school for four hundred and eighty-two students. That's a three-section, um, grade school minus the two pre-K classrooms. So these are your classrooms here. This is your, the space we need for administration, your cafeteria and kitchen, your gym and auditorium component, stage, um, your media center with a computer room, your art, your music, and then your special ed classes. This is building support and your circulation. So we kind of look at that graphically. And we build a detailed program. How would all these spaces fit? We focused on the educational components, the classrooms at eight hundred and fifty square feet in total data. And we come up with a number and we came up with about fifty-eight thousand, um, square feet to, to build this kind of prototype. And then we check it against the state numbers and they tell us it's sixty thousand forty-three. Here is a worksheet from the state. Um, what they typically have us do is we apply a certain square footage per grade to the students. So as you see, it's a hundred and twenty per, per each grade until you get to fifth, they can get a little bit bigger. So you take the amount of square footage, you multiply, you divide it by the, um, grades and then you come up with a number and that's our sixty thousand square feet building. And now, just to talk costs, to renovate as new a building of this size, it would be a twenty-one million dollar project. With your anticipated reimbursement rate, it would be fourteen million on the city's side. Now looking at the new prototype, um, for the pre-K through eight school, this is a three-section school again for seven hundred and thirty-four students, but the relationships change a bit. Now we're adding an auditorium component, uh, and we have the two separate wings. You kind of want to break apart, um, the students just to have an, you know, an older grades and the younger grades just a little bit separate, but yet sharing the same resources. So here is an example of that. And again, we break out this program, um, and it totals up to around ninety-six thousand with the state being at a hundred thousand. So here, you're, as you move up the grades, you get, gain more square footage because now we need that auditorium, tech ed and those kind of spaces. And to renovate as new a building like this at a hundred thousand square feet, it would be a thirty-five million dollar project with twenty-three point eight million on the city's side.
So what's the next step in the process? I think the next step in the process is to look at all of your existing schools, um, take a look at which ones lend themselves best to this adapting and changing, uh, change in the model. Um, we also looked at new sites and, um, you're going to see a new site that you don't own today. And while fairly, um, challenging to do that, to, to create a new school site, um, it certainly is an option. We wound up looking at about seven to ten alternate sites that currently aren't schools. Again, the state is very clear about acquiring new property for schools and so there's a process there. Um, so with that, maybe I'll run through this one. Um, what you're seeing here is one of these decision, decision matrix or one of these hierarchical rating systems for looking at each of the sites. So for instance, um, we'll start in alphabetical order, Brookside here in this column. We assign a, a rating of one to five on the site size. So the larger, larger the number, the, uh, less it may need. And the lower the number, the greater the need. And so each one of those, and again, we go through these, we look at everything from the site, the location, the playing fields, uh, the surrounding community and the compatibility of the site with the adjacent land and the building, the capital needs and its ability to expand. So at the bottom, I know it's a little bit hard to see, you're seeing a hierarchy of numbers that suggests that the ones that are the darker red here, Silver Mine, Row 8, um, are harder to adapt. Um, Narumake, uh, Ponus Ridge, uh, in green are much easier to adapt, much easier to expand. Um, and then there's others that are somewhere in that, in that matrix. So again, this is a tool that we've used to focus on what the next steps are. With that, Mike?
Um, one of the key criteria that was brought up early on was the large number of unassigned students. We wanted to work this into our long-range plan as well as, um, the recommendations. So our building options. So we began looking at, um, a large number of students in, in Sono that get outplaced every year. They're, they fall into this category of being unassigned. And we saw that there's about three hundred and thirty, three hundred and fifty students every, every given year. So what we wanted to do was, um, we've modeled the enrollment as if these students are going to continue to be outplaced and they become, you know, part of the utilization analysis for each of those other receiving schools throughout the, uh, throughout the district. Um, so what we wanted to do is see if we were able to provide an educational option in their neighborhood, what that would mean for the capacity at all of the other schools that are the receiving schools for, for these students. And we see that across the board that, um, we would have a pretty significant reduction in some of those schools that are above capacity now without doing anything else except being able to provide a home for the, uh, for the under-signed students. And, and that was one of the, uh, one of the key factors in when we began looking at sites and in particular, um, looking at the Nathaniel Ely site in, in Sono to, uh, say that, you know, we had as well as not only a good site from a technical parameters, which, um, John and, and Michelle and Ryan will touch on, but also a good site from a demographic standpoint in that we're outplacing students. We would no longer need to be able to do this. And it does provide some space savings elsewhere as well as provide some, uh, a neighborhood component for, uh, for a school for those students.
And so there they are. There are the recommendations. I think the, the first recommendation is to build a brand-new school on the Nathaniel Ely site. Um, in short, the current program there, the, the Ed Start program remains in that existing school building. Um, everything we're talking about tonight envisions using the balance of that. And I think it's, uh, Spring, Springwood, Springfield, Springwood Park, we're using the park. Um, and leaving that school in operation and in place. Um, this is envisioned as a pre-K five school and is right now at the most conservative cost. When we look at cost, conservative cost is as new construction. And the state of Connecticut has downgraded that cost from thirty-two point five to twenty-two point five. So without considering any special legislation that would increase that twenty-two point five, again, we're using very conservative numbers, numbers kind of right out of the, right out of the book. Um, the other two recommendations are at Narumake to create a brand-new pre-K eight program at the Narumake school. Um, we'll, again, we'll show you the details of that. The thinking is that there it is as a direct relationship with the Norwalk High School. And there is some continuity of shared, uh, programs and a, a, an educational path. And then Ponus Ridge, uh, large site, location, adaptability also lends itself very well. And we're going to talk about those detailed plans. The alternate is, uh, St. Phillips. So St. Phillips approached the city to say, we have the site available. We are interested in discussion. We toured the, the building twice. Um, the recommendation is to combine that, um, and with Tracy and create a new school there. I think you're going to see that the demographic numbers are not quite as effective in that model, but they still work. So then certainly last and not least are to take the balance of the school, recommending that three follow the renovation process, seven follow the alteration-extension process, and then four follow the capital needs process. And again, Michelle's going to tell you that there are a couple there that I think both the board, certainly the building committee has come back and said, are you sure on those? Which way do they move? And certainly there is a dynamic there that says that that difference between capital need and going alteration has flexibility in it. So with that, I think we're going to launch into the recommendations.
So this is our concept for the Nathaniel Ely school. Um, what we really wanted to do here was create a community space for this, this community that doesn't have a school basically. So we wanted to design so one wing could serve the community when the school's off, um, closed or at night. So you walk in and your media center is there at the center. You have your cafeteria, kitchen, and you have your gym with your stage. And you have a music and art room and toilet rooms to support all that. So then your academic component begins here with your administration and your pre-K kindergarten and first grade on the lowest level as needed by code with some special ed classrooms and toilet rooms spread. And then upstairs, you have your second, third, fourth and fifth grade with additional special ed classrooms up there. So in general, this plan, you know, works really well since you can close that off and it fits well on the site, which Ryan will show you.
A little difficult to see here, but I'll try to orient everybody. Um, the Ely Ave is this road running on the west side of the page. Um, you have a gray rock road on the east side. And you have Ingles Ave that runs on the south side of the site. Um, and the heart of the parcel is where we're promoting the development of this school. You can see this shape in the heart of the school, matches the building that Michelle had on the previous slide. This back parcel here is part of the Springwood Park parcel, um, but is divided by, it's hard to see, but there's those wetlands and water cores that runs around here. So it's divided in back. Possible opportunities for, um, athletic fields or, um, court sports, but probably alleged maybe chess as well. So the site, um, things that we look at when we're developing these site plans, um, one is the separation of parent and bus drop-off, having a physical separation. So you can see here off of Ingles, we've actually provided two points of entry. One for parents to come in, circulate around, drop off their kids if it's short-term. If it's longer-term, you have, um, polling spaces for visitors and shared with faculty. Um, and they can circulate out the same. Buses would come in, circulate around, drop off along here and offer eight buses, then circulate out. Also have loading on this side, which works while the bus, and then emergency access. Um, you, you can see in here, we have a parking area up here to the right, parking along the access, access way, additional parking, um, for faculty, the bus drop-off area. Um, outdoor playground at the K five level and you have room for playground equipment, um, a little bit of hard service play as well as grass play there as well. Now on the right-hand side, you can see here, um, there's a, a few parallel lines. This site is topographically challenged. You have a, you have a nice plateau where the existing ball field and tennis car, tennis court is. It's nice to lap. After that, going down to Gray Rock Road, you have some pretty steep topography. So developing on that portion of the site is quite costly and not practical. Um, and then you, with any site, you're, in a parish like this, you do not have any, you have very little pavements. And when you put a new, introduce new pavement onto site, you have to provide an area for storm water quality. Um, so you don't, um, increase the rate of storm water on the site. the site.
Here's our concept for Narumake. Now, the challenge with Narumake was, is the site, placing the addition was a bit challenging, but we think it really works well. What we had to do was relook at the existing portion of Narumake to restaff the building. So we start by having pre-K kindergarten and first grade kind of in this lane, and then, you know, grades two, three, four, and five kind of move their way around. What we've also done here is increased the administration space, added a security vestibule here. We've located some special ed, art, music, computer rooms kind of throughout. We have a multipurpose room here. The music room remains where it is. And now this gym is actually going to become a cafeteria. You can keep the stage here so that they can have that auditorium component, but now we've, and the addition will include a new gym that would be fit for the middle school level with locker rooms and everything. So now the addition, it connects right up to this corridor and keeps the gym and media as close to the existing buildings so your core shared spaces are central. And then you have additional art and music, which could be more for the sixth through seventh, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders there. You have a tech ed room and specials along on this side. And on this side, we've clustered the classrooms to kind of keep with the same example that Narumake already has. We're including a science room, and then your three traditional classrooms per grade of that. And then we end this corridor here with like your guidance component to serve the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. Now what's missing in the pre-K through eight model is that auditorium. But with the flexibility of having this space and the proximity of the high school, these students can go right out the door and head over to share those type of resources there.
So again, from a site perspective, just to orient everybody, there's Strawberry Hill, Strawberry Hill Avenue to the west of the page here, King Street to the south running along here. Here's the existing track and field to the high school, the high school is located up here. And the building roof there, you can see the existing school here and here. The additions that Michelle was just talking about are these crosshatch areas here. So again, what are we going to talk about on this site? Separation of parent and bus, parking, outdoor phys ed, and storm water management. So the way we handled it here on this site is reconfigured the entire front of Narumake with the addition going over the existing school. We've centrally located the parent drop-off and pickup, and then staff and visitor parking at the heart of the site here, as well as staff and visitor parking to meet the needs of this size school. You can see there's a parking center down here. Based on the student population, the faculty and staff, we're projecting about around 200 spaces that will be required for this site. The bus circulation is separated from here. We have one bus drop-off for the sixth, seventh, and eighth. You have a small admin offices here that can handle the inflow and outflow of the kids. Parents could drop their middle school students off over here. And then there's the other bus drop-off over here for the lower grades. And again, the lower grade parents, same circulation, come through the site, curbside drop-off pickup, and then individual space could belong here if you have to, especially for the pre-K. Now fitting a, an outdoor physical education component, athletic facility was challenging based on topography out here. However, if we take off the hillside here and bring this athletic field down about seven feet from the existing school, benches and ice, and also makes a really nice connection to the building. You would have your existing playgrounds, you'd be able to maintain most of it. Addition of some here, some over here. Here's the storm water management, standard storm water management area over here. And this is the pathway connection that Michelle and John are talking about from the school to the...
Here's the concept at Ponus. Here it's a larger student population with four sections per grade. And again, we had to relook at the existing building and look at kind of restacking it. But what we approached with is the existing cafeteria is here, so we wanted to connect that so that possibly two cafeterias and a kitchen could be here, or a kitchen and one larger cafeteria, depending on desire. But we've created a separate admin entry point for the pre-K through second grade wing. We've created that wing here. Pre-K and K will have their own bathrooms, and then one and two have bathrooms here. And then moving into the building, the central part of Ponus would become kind of the shared area. Media center would need some expansion. You'd have your tech ed and your sciences over here. Your art and your specials would be over here. You have, the luxury, we already have an auxiliary gym, so that could serve the younger kids or at least create the opportunity to schedule multiple gym classes at once. Your administration would remain here, and they can expand a little bit into this classroom here, and you have your grades three and four over here near the auditorium wing. Upstairs, you can have your five, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and there's some special ed classrooms scattered up there. So all in all, it works really well separating the grades, you know, with your younger kids here, middle level here, and the older ones here, and keeping that central shared resources there.
Okay, from a site perspective, the picture looks a lot smaller. That's because the site is one of the largest that the city of Norwalk owns for school sites, about 41 acres. With that, it has, as Michelle just said, a four-section proposal here. You can see, again, to orient everybody, here's Hunter's Lane running on the west side of the property, and Ponus Ave up in this, it would be corner over here on the east. From a site perspective, they don't call it Ponus Ridge for particular reason. Well, actually, it is because this entire site here is a nice plateau up top, very steep topography along the edge of that plateau, falling down into a couple wetland pockets on the bottom. So how do we handle separate parent and bus on this site? We've provided a dedicated for the younger grades, pre-K through two. We have parent drop-off along here. Again, this is curbside pickup and drop-off with the appropriate amount of parking for faculty and staff, visitor space in that here. All bus circulation is coming through the heart of the site, which is for both the younger grades and the over grades. So the younger grades, we provided this turnoff here where they would drop off and pick up the kids. You can see there's a physical separation between parent and bus drop-off, which is key, so you don't have to have kids crossing any vehicular traffic. That's similar on all the other kinds. For middle school kids, you'd have buses would continue through here, circulate around, drop off, pickup, circulate, and come out. We chose the buses for this part of the existing site access because of the sightlines coming in and out here, there's some topography. Looking left, it's a little challenging to figure out if you can get out or not in a safe manner. So from the bus situation, your high level is a little bit higher, so you can see a little bit farther, you have a little more decision-making time. We would change this north access to an in-and-out for middle school or the upper grade parent circulation, drop-off and pickup along here, and your support staff. So outdoor physical education, not much changes out here to the fields. We slightly shift one of the softball field, plenty of green floor out here, add a playground for the younger grades. Were proposing school over these kinds of basketball courts, so we relocated them up in this quadrant over here with adjacency of parking. And again, reinforce the idea of a second or a fourth emergency access onto the site off of...
As we went through our different utilization tables, this is the one that looks at the cumulative effect if all three of these projects were to go forward and be completed directly at a point in time of 2021. So a few years from now, you'll see that we have this continued growing deficit based on your existing demographics and seat capacity. And then if all three projects were done concurrently and brought online for 2021, you would see that the elementary top line would have a large infusion of space, they would then have a surplus of about 400 seats, a deficit still in the middle school, but a very small deficit of about 151 seats, but overall surplus of about 253 seats. As we went through the projections, you'll see that we had a slight trough in the elementary number. So, you know, as that trough starts to come back up again in '21, '22, '23, '24, and '25, you'll see that that surplus, we haven't done anything else to the buildings, begins to dwindle back down to about 100. And then the, this minor deficit in the middle school has remedied itself to about a surplus of about 100. So overall, you're looking a little more comfortable for your seat count at about a positive 200 overall at the end of that 10-year horizon.
So what do these projects cost? I think we've talked about the state process and maximizing the reimbursement. And so what you see here is, first, Nathaniel Ely, the total estimated project cost at about $450 a square foot. That is the total project cost, includes all of the soft costs, the site and the building. Anticipated reimbursement is low without any form of special legislation, any form of a choice program or an intra-district magnet. Look at my, intra is an intra, but an intra-district magnet. Without any consideration of that, any of those would increase this and lower the anticipated City of Norwalk share. But you're going to see this consistently as we put these numbers together. At Narumake, it's anticipated at about $350 a square foot to renovate that as new, and then the additions are figured at about $450 a square foot. So like new construction is more expensive than renovation because you're building foundations, you're building space that doesn't exist. And again, the anticipated City of Norwalk share. Finally, at Ponus, a similar matrix where renovate the entire building, add the additions at 450, use the state process and state grant, school grant. So the grand total is $112,757,500, of which the anticipated state share, again, without any other considerations, is $33 million, and this is an anticipated or approximate $78 million project for the City of Norwalk. So we did look at an alternate, we're not going to repeat the first two, but we're going to look at Ponus again. And I do just want to quickly mention that we did a similar process for about six or seven other sites. Brought them to the committee, they had various concerns, considerations, and so what's in front of you today is the recommendation moving forward. So what would happen at Tracy and St. Phillips?
So again, we had to relook at the building, restaff it. Here you're going to notice that you're only seeing grades four through eight because we'll show you the rest of the grades over at the St. Phillips building. But here, what we would need to do is put a small addition to get locker rooms into your, into the gym, keep the stage, and just build locker rooms back there. One of the things we've seen at Tracy is that there's kind of two entry points, but we're trying to pick one. We would ramp up here and have people enter into a secure vestibule at this administration point. On your lower level, we have music, a special ed, your grades three and four clustered together. Then to the back, we've expanded the kitchen and cafeteria to support this entire building. We've taken two classrooms, made it into one for tech ed. Moving up the floor, we have some more special ed, grades five, six, seven, and eight, and then your science classrooms. So that handles your upper grades. Moving over to St. Phillips. Now, this is a trickier building to explain. This portion of the building is a two-story component. This is the lower level, this is the upper level, and at a midpoint, this component. So there's a lot of kind of level changes, but what we would do is add here, this part would be an addition, where we would connect to the existing carriage house that we would convert to the media center. So you'd enter upon this door here, you have your main administration space at this level, and you can go up the stairs, take the elevator, or even take a ramp up to this main floor where you have additional administrations such as the nurse, you have your art room, toilet rooms, and you have grades one and two up here with a special ed. Now to connect over to this portion, you have to go down a half a flight of stairs only, and that's where your pre-K kindergarten would be, along with some administration and support spaces. On the lower level, under this portion of the building, this is still halfway high, so they do have windows on in each of these classrooms, so it's not underground or anything. You can have your cafeteria and a multipurpose space for the younger kids to run around without having the gym at this portion of the building. You have your music classroom, special ed, and then you have your support, your kitchen, boiler room, and another special ed down there. And then we're ramping back up that half a level to get to grade here. So all in all, this would take a little bit of work. The existing classrooms at St. Phillips are half the size, so we have to knock out a wall to make it a more of an appropriate size since they're such small classrooms. And then everywhere you see highlighted is more where it's kind of extensive renovations would occur or additions here. But all in all, these two together work for the pre-K through eight model.
Okay, from a site perspective, again, I'm going to orient you. Camp Street over here to the west, Branch Street to the east, and it's just cut off at the bottom of the page for Father Conlon Place on the bottom. The Tracy School is located up here in the northwest. You can see the small addition that we're proposing here on the Tracy School, and then the St. Phillips existing school is here, with the connection addition in the center connected to the old carriage house. So having these schools on a campus setting, just talk briefly about the parent and bus circulation. Here, where the Tracy component, you have the buses coming in. We've rearranged this a little bit, but have the buses come in and get them closer to the building and drop off curbside coming to the accessible entrance here, buses exit out. You have parkings, visitor or faculty and staff here. Parent circulation will come through the site, some couple drop-off pickup here. Most of the main drop-off pickup over here handled in the cafeteria space for on kids that have parents on the ride, enabling them to come through here and exit, having this pathway connection to the St. Phillips parcel. Everyone, thanks for the help over here on Branch Street, take left or right. It's on the Mary Way. As far as the St. Phillips side, there's several options on this one. This is the one we chose to run with versus this plan, utilizing this connection off of Father Conlon for parent drop-off pickup, they come all the way through here, drop-off pickup, and then buses would come in also because Branch Street, then drop-off pickup, and then exit the site. They also have the option of heading over to the bus or return where they need to go. They get all of the buses could also come out here, take left or right. Outdoor facilities, maintain playground over here, we're proposing standard playground over here, and tennis courts here, and just a multipurpose building in the heart of the site. The important thing here too is in combination with the Ely site is that we have the potential of losing tennis and basketball courts, then have to replace either on an Ely site or another facility in Norwalk. So this is a potential opportunity to locate basketball and some tennis here if that were the scenario. Again, we don't want to forget our storm water quality. People ask, well, you have the, you know, just nothing, but there's a pressure here. We can, but the water has to be treated first. Figure storm water quality, discharge and... Figure groundwater quality, discharge and then it's a pressure that's the same.
So as we begin following the same as our recommended option, this option, overall, adds a surplus of about 91 seats. However, when you begin looking into the details of it, you can see that due to the way the conversions occur for the pre-K, there is a much larger surplus of middle school seats versus the deficit of elementary seats. So it doesn't quite as effective of an impact as the recommended option is that really tackling the, that critical seat deficit in those right grade level areas, a logical next step could potentially be restacking some of those middle school surplus into elementary school seats towards the back end of that 10-year projection horizon.
So again, what do the, what do the projects cost, and how does, how does this translate? I think the first thing you're going to see is that this costs less, so it's 112 million versus 105. And so what's, why is that? Two key factors, one, the 954, if you recall, Ponus Ridge had 954, and this plan serves 734 students. Ponus was about, with the new plan, with the addition, about 130,000 square feet. This is about 100,000 square feet. So those are the reason that the number, and the reason that the costs are less. But again, here is another option, here's another approach, and another way of putting and in a different location. So again, we're trying to maximize utilization of your existing schools, but this is a different location, again, keeping the first two options the same, building the new school at Nathaniel Ely and then the Narromine option. So we're now going to talk, and I don't know how we're doing timing-wise, so we've got, we've got...
No, we're good.
Okay, good, good. I know we've got a lot to cover here, so in brief, we're going to now look at all of the other schools. So again, there's the recommendation on what to do with new, what do we, what do we recommend for the other schools? I won't talk anymore about renovations, expansion, alteration, or the capital needs, but Michelle will, as we walk through East Wall schools, and I think we're going to take them in alphabetical order.
Yeah, moving in alphabetical order with Brookside, we are recommending the capital needs option here. There's no additions or anything, so the anticipated, well, the total cost of capital needs are 3.1 million, with the cities being 2.6. Columbus, Columbus is one we recommend that they renovate as new, along with an extension. Columbus is, you'll see here, that shared space in the middle, your auditorium, gym, cafeteria. So we wanted to come up with an option that would help remedy Columbus. So what we propose here is to take your existing gym and keep that, your cafeteria, since your kitchen exists and your main access point is right here. So we'd expand those two, along with adding two special support classrooms in there. And your media center, we could even expand over that space a little bit now, since it's not, doesn't need to be a full two-story height space. And instead, we would add a gym with a stage over towards the fields more. So you have your main entrance here and a secondary entrance here. Ryan will show you a diagram of the site.
Well, in case, we have Henry Street to the west, and this is Chestnut over here. This brown box here is the expansion that Michelle was just talking about, and what it does, we expand out the back of the school and the location of the existing play area. And so we replace that over here, we shift it over and provide new playground space here, maintain and expand and improve the existing paved play here, as well as over here, meet equity standards, and also we are looking at potentially making access out onto Henry Street to help with the parent drop-off pickup situation, help improve that situation now, as first curbside for the buses, and then the parents utilize this development down here, search through and drop.
Moving on to Cranberry, Cranberry recommend the alteration and extension. Cranberry is another one with your shared gym, auditorium. And now we know it's sister building, Fox Run, has had an addition for the cafeteria and an extension of the media center, so we kind of propose the same. A different, a little bit of a different concept, we would propose actually relocating your administration in the front and creating that security vestibule, so that they actually have eyes on who's coming in instead of being kind of behind that corridor. And instead, your media center can begin to take over that space and expand into the courtyard there. And then you can add your cafeteria and expand your business, accommodate that need.
From a site perspective, here's Noel Lot Lane to the south of the page, the existing building here, and you can see the building expanding, which I was just talking about. Really, the deficiency here on the site is one, again, is one of your larger sites, so a lot of space out here, but we saw opportunity for improved bus and parent circulation. So we utilize this southern entrance here for bus only circulating and help provide that physical separation between parent drop-off and bus drop-off. Right now, people who come through here, this is a one-way circulation out of the site here, so you have the bus and parent contact. You need to influence your parking here, and parents could come in and out here, have long queue and distance off the street, Noel Lot Lane, sort of, they round drop off.
Okay. Fox Run, we recommend the alterations and extension here also, and that is just over an $11 million project, with 8.2 being the city share. Jefferson, Jefferson is one we recommend that they renovate as new, along with an extension. So Jefferson's totaling at almost 22 million here, with 14.6 being the city share. So Jefferson, again, is another example with your shared space there. So what we've done, something similar to, we showed at Columbus, where you would keep your, your gym to be the cafeteria, because again, your kitchen is already there, your access point is there, why, why mess with a good thing, kind of thing. Your media center right now is a small piece up here, so we can expand that, again, over that gym portion. And on that third floor, your top level, which opens up to the playgrounds out here, you can put a gym out there into the fields, the larger vestibule that connects to the rest of the building. And again, with Jefferson, we would recommend bringing that, the population down to the floor, the right fit for the size of the building.
Which is, Michelle, like 450, I think?
Was that?
It was about 450.
450?
450. From a site perspective, here's Jefferson in the center of the slide. You have US Route 7 over here, entrance ramps, exit ramps, Route 1 coming through here, Van Buren Ave, Grand View coming down, so this is a very busy intersection. Here's the building expansion Michelle was just talking about. We have to, right now, it's in the place of the existing playground, we take a portion of that playground, displace it over here, add additional paved play to the site here, connection between gymnasium, paved play, and outdoor, and slightly shift the outdoor play over here, utilizing most of the equipment that's already there. So from a, from a site circulation standpoint, I don't have the pretty graphic arrows, but it's easy to explain. Because of parent drop-off and pickup, the way it operates now, they shut down this very busy intersection, they have a crossing guard here, parents come in here, wrap around, pick up their children, children have to walk out across the street, face a parking lot. So our idea is to flip-flop the two spaces, currently faculty parks down here, so flip-flop and make this a parent circulation off the site, and have that direct connection to the school for the children rather than crossing traffic, and have faculty and staff, and the adult group be able to make the correct decision.
Moving on to Kendall. Kendall was a tough one for us. As we wrap up all of these, John's going to show you how we kind of got to this decision-making point, and Kendall kind of crosses, teeters the line of either addressing the capital needs or taking the alteration route. But here, we're showing you, if taken the alteration, it would be a 13, almost a $14 million project. So we'll explain more of that as we go on. Marvin, we are recommending taking the alteration and extension route, and there's no, although no extension, just alterations, and that's a $14.2 million project with 10.3 being the city share. Nathan Hale, Nathan Hale, we are recommending the alteration, and that would be a $24.6 million project, 17.9 being the city share. Ponus Ridge, this is an example, if, if this wasn't chosen to add on to, to become a pre-K8, we would recommend the alteration, $26 million, with 19 being the city share. This is Rowan Middle School, we are recommending addressing the capital needs here at Rowan, which is just over $5 million, with 4.2 being the city share. Here we have Rowetin, Rowetin, we're recommending the capital needs. This is a $4.7 million project with 3.9 being the city share. Here we have Stoner Line, we're recommending the alteration process here, it's a $12 million project with 8.8 in the city share. Tracy Elementary School, again, this is an option if this wasn't chosen for a pre-K8 model, we would recommend the alteration project at 14.6 million and 10.07 being the city share. West Rock Middle School, as that is your, the most in need of all the middle schools and the highest actually of the capital needs, we do recommend that be a renovate as new project, and it's a $35 million project, 23.5 being the city share. Wolf Pit, we recommend taking the alteration and extension here. Again, you'll see that we have a shared space. This would be a $15.2 million project, which is almost $11 million for the city. What we propose here, actually, this came up in our capital needs, that there isn't a second means of egress from these courts. These are a split level that walk out onto a catwalk, so we are recommending building stairways at the end of each of those for each court, so that we would include there. And then again, this is the existing kitchen that serves lunch in the gym. We would recommend building a, expanding the kitchen and building a cafeteria out towards the playgrounds that way.
From a site perspective, we have Starlight Drive to the west here, and Wolf Pit Avenue on the south, south side of the page, I believe north is actually to the right on this page. The building expansion, you can see off school here on the west side of the building, and really here, there's only one way in and out of Wolf Pit right now. It's very congested during parent drop-off and pickup, this auxiliary block over here, parents crammed in here, parents parked, they could find a place and walk here and pick up their kids, and everyone's trying to exit out of the same space, and as well as there's a few buses that come in and out of here, too. So there's a secondary egress point here that we're proposing to take advantage of, utilize the existing paved play area for, to serve as your parent drop-off and pickup, circulate out, add additional parking, potentially you also have room to potentially, although it's typically challenging, you still might be able to pace your...
So similar to the, to the previous matrix, you start to look at, how do you arrive at a recommendation, either use one of the three approaches, renovation, alteration, and capital needs? And again, the same ranking of one to five, but this time, we've given an importance factor, and I think the single most important component of all of these are the educational equity or the educational component that goes into these schools. And so again, if you dive into the detail of the study, you're going to see that we spent a lot of time looking at the special, the support spaces. Those are everything from special ed, but also the smaller set aside spaces where I may go to get some special instruction, I may be two-on-two, I may be in a smaller group setting. Again, the ability to have the classrooms sized to the correct size, number of students, and the ability to provide that education, we think is a key factor in which route to choose here. So that's why we gave that a higher importance factor. And then what this starts to tell you is, as you look at Jefferson, as you look at Columbus, they are lacking a lot of that, and so those numbers are lower, and it's the lower numbers that are driving into the renovation. The higher numbers, Brookside, if you remember, back to the overall investment in Brookside and the overall capital needs in Brookside, fairly well met, fairly well put together, and therefore that would drive it here to the capital needs. As Michelle described, we struggled with, with Kendall, and in fact, one of the early cost metrics that we provided you, Kendall was kind of right on that cusp of where it should go. Should it go the alteration process or should it go capital needs? And again, I think this is where you come in to say, here's what we're thinking, here's where we think these should kind of shift left and right. Certainly, some of the ones that are at the more extreme end, obviously, we can talk about, but I think it's clear that that's where the focus is. We did a similar process for the middle schools, and you'll see that Ponus Ridge is left out because it's in our primary recommendation. So of the three remaining middle schools, we think that West Rocks is the one that needs the most improvement and follows the renovation process. We also think that demographics, and this is similar on the, on the elementary side, but the demographics and where the population is growing, again, Mike did a great job of describing your population growth and where it is concentrated. So that factor two is up here to create this recommendation. So now, what does all that look like when we start to talk about dollars and cents? The ones that we just looked at, all of the other schools, because we've talked about 112 million being the first recommendation, create the new school, and then to improve the other two schools, here are the balance of the schools. And again, they're in order from most, most expensive project cost to least expensive. And that total of projects is 237,751,440. Again, bringing all those factors in, the anticipated city share is 170 million. So I think we can all see how important it is to use the state grants to their fullest and to continue to seek ways of maximizing the state grants. It does help cash flow certainly, but it does help offset some of your direct costs, some of the costs that the city would invest in these schools. So now, when we combine that matrix with all of the others, what does it look like in the 10-year plan? And so here are the, here are the numbers. I think the first recommendation of building a new school, the 112, of which the anticipated City of Norwalk share is 78 million. Then, the balance of the schools at 237 million, of which your share is 170 million, and then that total, the grand total is, of this entire presentation, is 359,508,940, of which your anticipated share is about 250 million. Again, pretty daunting, pretty substantial, but we're talking about an investment over a 10-year period, and we're talking about kind of a C-chain in where you are today. And the vision is to get all of the schools to have the correct number of students, and the correct number of students are kind of what, what is driving that. I think Michelle talked about, what is that formula? What does it look like? We talked about the seats in the classroom, getting all of those onto an even, even level, and I think it's hard to imagine, but imagine Jefferson at about 450 as opposed to, I think, the 610 there today, and the portable classroom's gone. So this really is a long-term, the long-term look. And here is the, the first pass at putting this out over 10 years. We would start with Nathaniel Ely. Certainly, early on, it's the planning process, but building that school will immediately create about 450 to 480, somewhere in that number, 450 brand-new seats that don't exist here today. I think that begins the process of opening up some of the flexibility in the other schools. I think we're also recommending that you start with the two brand-new pre-K8s at Narromine and Ponus Ridge. Again, we're being very bold here in saying that you could do this over, say, a three-year period, it may well be a longer period, it could be as many as, as five. Next, go into the renovations, again, the greatest needs and West Rocks, Jefferson, and Columbus, and take care of those renovations. Then move on to the extension and alterations, and certainly not neglecting the capital needs, and those two could be spread out over that 10 years. When you start to compare the overall dollar amounts, at about 15, somewhere in When you start to compare the overall dollar amounts at about 15, somewhere in the 14,15 million, certainly that could be spread out over this 10-year period. So there we are with a 10-year, and we call it a dynamic master plan because again, this is one of the first, I know it's not the full board, but effectively the full board presentation, to begin to consider where you will go with this in the future. I think Dr. Adamowski has shared with us that there are planning sessions coming up, or they'll be delving into that. But we believe this gives you the tools to start that process and really focus on making that change here at the city of Norwalk. And with that, I think on behalf of the team, I want to thank you, I want to thank everybody here for your time, your attention, and we very much appreciate the, the opportunity to serve you, serve the city, and serve all of the, all of the folks here in Norwalk. So thank you.
Thank you.
Questions first?
Yes. Are there any questions or comments from board members on the report? I mean, I know some of you have been involved in the detailed meetings for three days and are probably questioned out, but Brian, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just curious, why Cranberry Elementary wasn't considered for like a bigger expansion? It's probably our largest property in the city.
Correct, Brian, it's, it's one of the largest. Like Ponus technically is the largest.
I'm not even counting the parkland, but the park is another 150-acre buffer right to the north of us.
I think that if you start to look at the demographics, I think you start to look at the needs, we think that the modest additions that are proposed and the modest expansion, again, there's an aspect that needs to be written. We're not presuming that we've captured every piece of that alteration. And I think there was another factor.
It didn't have store capacity, and it also was, even though it was very large a site, it was very constrained a site.
Right.
We had a lot of challenges.
So utilities is another factor that, again, we'll delve into all the details of what's out there and how to expand.
Okay. With respect to Narumac, was consideration to traffic held there? I mean, Strawberry Hill is getting very congested now. And now we're going to add, right, so this would be a staggered entry as well, wouldn't be all eight grades show up at once. You're basically getting two hours of traffic of parents and buses in the morning instead of one and two in the afternoon, or however long the pickup cycle is.
Two bell times for it. So you wouldn't have any more of an impact than you already have today, trying to be respectful of that. And as well as getting everything, as Ryan pointed out, everything onsite. Totally, everything onsite, all queuing, all parent, all activity onsite, so people can egress, so there's no backup onto the...
Okay, so the last question, in a couple of parts, with respect to Ingalls Ave, Nathaniel Lealie, was, was the limiting factor on expanding the existing building, the lease agreements in place, was there, is there any experience with being able to like move those kinds of facilities, looking at cost options, making sure that, you know, before spending 35 million dollars on a brand-new school, there was an opportunity to just expand the existing school, tighten up that campus a little more, and leverage more of the land around it?
I think, first and foremost, the available land, I think having an open site and the ability to effectively begin right away on building a new school. I think relocating a program, renovating a school is a tremendous challenge. Again, we don't take lightly the idea of renovating any of your schools, but to try to renovate a building in place, there are some constraints to existing structure, some constraints, and certainly to that site. Everything is kind of right now at the front of the site, and the back of the site is kind of underutilized. It, it is also that split level, I think we talked about one of the challenges of St. Phillips on two-level, believe it or not, the current facility is on two-level. One discharges from the upper, and then the other here and there at the front. I did walk through the facility, it is in reasonably good shape. Is that the highest and best investment in the next 20 years? I don't think anybody would argue with a new school, and I think that having a brand-new school will last every bit, if not longer, than trying to renovate an existing building and making it like new. Here we have a district of folks that are, don't have a neighborhood school to support all the population, and the ability to bring a school online right away, I think is really driving part of that importance factor. So with that, anybody else, is there any other...
Do they receive grants or...
Which...
I understand some of the constraints on these existing buildings, but I can imagine that's a pen stroke away from being some kind of other reality.
And certainly as your consultants, we would never presume something like that. In other words, that we could be so presumptive to say, hey, here's this building, it's ready to go.
But physically speaking, as it were, there's no opportunity on a pre-K through 8, and I'm just going back to some of the data Dr. Adamowski shared with us in that area, and you know, the, that a K through 8 in that kind of area is, is very successful, has a lot of history.
Well, the consultants did look at K through, pre-K through 8, but given the site, I think you ended up with a three-story building and a school that was much too large, right?
And I think the ability to have some form of recreation, again, I think there's other opportunities for recreation, but again, one of our concerns was that wetlands there on that site. And while, long-term, I think that may well be developed, again, we wanted to start to look at what was probably the most cost-effective way to make this happen sooner, rather than as a long-term, let's put this project, you know, further out in the timeline.
Okay, and so, so the last question is just for argument's sake, were the existing Nathaniel Lealie building vacant, ready to buy, used, to do whatever? Was there like any possibility to build off the back of it, make it a, and fit that kind of model in there?
It certainly can be looked at. There is an opportunity anytime you have a building. I think you saw what we came up with on St. Philip, there is an opportunity to reuse an existing building. Could be looked at, yes, yes. Does it satisfy all the needs? No. I think you're still talking about a fairly significant addition to that existing building to make again this idealized program, whether it's the pre-K 5, which is what we're proposing, or the pre-K 8, you know, does that start to fit better on that site? I think the short answer is, it could.
Okay. You, sorry, you brought up one more question I could ask that with, has there been any discussion with the diocese about St. Phillips or...
Only with the facility gentleman onsite, a gentleman named Alan, and I've forgotten his last name.
And it would only incorporate the, the school itself, not the, not the church?
The church was not in our discussions, nor was the, it's a Lockwood, I believe, mansion there.
Or just above that, we struck a line on the site of where we would look to be able to subdivide it. That made sense to be able to fit the circulation, the outdoor area, as well as providing enough space to have a good fit for, for the site. And that would all have to be negotiated and go through a subdivision process of that.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Mike.
Okay, any other questions? One, I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead. No, no, you first.
I just, I, I think it'd be useful for everyone to hear a question I had asked when we, the committee was meeting with the consultant team, was talking to Mike Zubo about demographics, and that really, maybe you could just kind of rephrase if you remember my question about, you know, where the growth was from, and, and a lot of us, you know, we're a suburb of New York City, and we think that a lot of our population growth and student growth are families that move, young families that move out of the city to the suburbs and driving it. And we've also had a number of people from overseas move to Norwalk. At least that's a perception, but in our discussions, you had kind of gone through that it really was the local birth rate and this migration from other areas was really a rounding area. Maybe just go into that a little more so that people can hear that it's really, it's a local issue, it's not a migration issue.
Yeah, for, for an urban, you know, Norwalk is a largely urban environment for kinetic standards, and when we look at things like, and I'm not going to bore you with all details, like different birth decay and different ratios, Norwalk has always had a pretty steady birth decay. And what that is, is that you look at the number of kindergarteners you have today and you relate that back to the number of birds you had five years ago. And for a city like Norwalk to have 75% retention of those birds turn in kindergarten, kindergarteners, that's pretty high for all kinetic standards. And we've worked in all the major cities, and we've gone through the exercise of actually tying students to all different types of housing, looking at immigration, so tracking students throughout their entire educational experience, and tracking groups of students from, you know, second through seventh grade in one year, through third to eighth grade. And, and even though we do see some mobility, we don't see a tremendous amount of transancy from students coming from outside of Norwalk into Norwalk. If not, we would have had ratios that would have been much higher than what we've experienced. So yeah, there is a large retention of families and children from zero to four, from when they're born in the city to ultimately at least begin their educational experience in kindergarten in Norwalk.
Thank you.
I was curious, you had mentioned when you were talking about, you know, sort of demographic standards that you apply here, that there was, you know, like a Rutgers standard and that, you know, that's sort of a national standard that you can use as a starting place. But then you did the analysis you just described, or you actually drilled down into specific data in Norwalk. I was just curious, are there any significant differences between what the Rutgers model would predict and what you found?
Yeah, there are. You have lower yields than what the Rutgers model predicts. But also the Rutgers model, we should point out that, you know, they're not specific to any one community, so your zoning and your market factors here ultimately dictate what you're going to get. And coming through, I think we went through 5,700 individual records from the building department, looking at all those, a large amount of your higher-density residential , so what we're going to call is our apartments, condos, townhomes to some degree, your bedroom counts. You have a lot more studio singles and some twos, but not a heck of a lot of the threes and fours. So as we look at these higher-density developments on single pieces of land, your yields are lower than what we've seen elsewhere. And your yields for about every 100 units of multifamily development, you get 10 students. And that's looked at over about a 30-year cycle. When you look at the Rutgers model, they count a lot of the suburban, more suburban communities in the state, where you may have that higher bedroom count, and you may have, with that higher bedroom count, you may have higher family sizes in there, and we're not seeing that here.
I was also curious, just a small question on Phillips, where's the, where are people going, are the church going to park? If we take that whole site from them?
Well, we're not taking the entire site, Mike, there is still some parking there. And I think in, in reality, Sunday, the school's not in session, so there is space available. And I think, again, in any urban environment, that shared resource of parking is a good thing. But there is, there is enough space at the front not to completely take all the parking away from the church. So again, that was the concept, we drew a line on the plan, mostly create access and kind of created the access from there up. I think there is some flexibility in where that line turns, turns north. So I think that can be worked out.
If it was going to be worked out, the church would want some shared use of the parking on the weekends.
Yeah, I imagine they would ask for that. And just like Brian's question about, you know, if you look at all the possibilities, the church, not necessarily, you know, whether the church stays or, or doesn't, but again, what would, what would work as the first, first model?
One other question, just in, in general, I mean, you know, I look at the Narumac layout, it looks very interesting, and you know, you really got a campus with Norwalk High School. But are there any, it just seems to me that there must be some issues with having another middle school, Nathan Hale, I mean, literally hop, skip, and jump right up the road. In terms of, you know, how do you district that school?
Yeah, you would have to change your, you would have to take a look at the catchment areas, especially as you begin to institute or introduce these new pre-K programs, to think that you would still have the same catchment areas in elementary and middle. Those were all, as the construction program was along, you'd have to begin revising those in order to make some logical sense with the introduction of another middle school over there.
That close, yeah.
Yeah, and likewise for Ponus, where you're actually introducing now a new elementary component into, into that area, you'd have to take a look at those and figure out how you exactly want to go through the process of either repopulating by changing the catchment zones, or by introducing a choice program, where you can then bring students, allow them to opt in, so you wouldn't have to go through as an abrupt shift or dramatical change in those catchment zones, maybe be able to have, you know, as the parents choose to be able, or students choose that they wish to build there.
So Mr. Riven Kasimis is not here this evening, but he raised this question at our committee meeting, and I think the answer was that, you know, while the Narumac site created a slightly better capacity, and it was a less complicated site because it was simply new construction, that the St. Phillips Tracy option was developed because it's a far better location in terms of where it is located in the city, in terms of student transportation and access to more students as opposed to concentrating all the schools in one part of town. So that's, that's why it's, it's there as an option. And you know, the value of that is, I guess, in the eye of the beholder and policymakers that sit on a board of education. But it's a, it's a, you know, it's, it's an interesting choice. You could improve a lot by going in either direction.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Shra?
I'm a little concerned about the green space. So at Ely, you're taking that, their park, and then you have the wetlands, so has that been taken into consideration, the, the green space for that area, for the people who live there and for the school?
Yes, and I think that was one of the factors that limited it to a pre-K 5 in this current configuration. Again, long-term, wetlands need to be carefully studied. There are times when wetlands, if they are not in a specific classification, could be filled. They could be bridged, they could be piped. So there's options there. Believe it or not, there are those schools that find that to be a perfect educational opportunity as well. Again, those are like the earth sciences, like myself, I think Brian maybe one too, right? That they'd like to look at, you know, that whole hydrology and how does, how does the earth work and how does wetlands work. So beyond that then, is this available land that's basically undeveloped. The topography is up and down, but the concept is to cut and fill the site, kind of balance that out. So yes, we did start to think about conceptually, would you create more open space there and more usable open space, whether it's park? It doesn't fit a full-size field very well, but it's close. Could it fit tennis courts? Sure. Would it fit a full, you know, soccer, football field, whatever the case may be? With a shoehorn, I think it fits on that back piece, but there's an opportunity there. So we, we focused on the school, we focused on, you know, the principle of trying to get buses, cars, again, stormwater management, and green open space. I think these sketches are pretty black and white in that they show not the development of trees, where do they go, and all the, all the things that would go along in the next step. But as a concept, yes, it certainly supports the idea of green open space.
What's that, what's that commercial property between that space and Rudner Court there? It's like a...
I think it's a site contractor, is that it?
There's actually several...
That's Deering?
I think so.
No, this, this, this one, Mike, or Brian, this one right here?
Yeah, exactly.
That's not Deering, it's another site contractor.
Site contractor, okay.
Deering, I believe, is...
The other side?
You know, over here. But yeah, it's basically surrounded by heavy commercial or, or contractor yards.
Well, no, actually, I mean, I wouldn't say surrounded, it looks like that's shoved right in the middle of the apartments and the space.
Well, I think, yeah, I think, but even on this side, which we're not showing you, still...
Yeah, yeah, over there, right, there's a lot more.
Kind of on three sides.
I think there's maybe even the access at the top, north side of that plan, access to another road, right away.
John, is it correct that this was the only city-owned building site in South Norwalk that you could identify that could be built on?
We looked at John Ryan Park as an option, we tried to test it, it's too small. We even looked at the community space next to it, again, not trying to presume anything, but it's too... but it's too small. Um, yes, we went up and down, Dr. Adam Mosky, and looked at, at the options in this, and this one is, is the best option in South Norwalk.
Yeah, Dr. Adam Mosky, as part of our build-out analysis, so, um, when we got into housing development and what's gonna happen, what's gonna occur, not only did we look at sort of what's being planned, approved, and permitted, we also looked at how much raw vacant land there is in the city, how much of that is in what zone of what quantity and of what quality and type it is. And, uh, from a development standpoint of just looking at how much housing could we get or how much commercial development could we get, um, there's not a heck of a lot of it left. So, what, the potential inventory that, you know, the developers are buying for, for residential or commercial uses, there's a, it's, it's a very limited quantity or commodity. And knowing that, when we began looking at other land, having that database, there weren't really any sites ready to go of a sufficient size unless there was something already in the city's ownership or site control. So, it really kinda helped us narrow our focus in saying, you know, what is basically in your control or the hands of the board, the hands of the community, and that's, that's these sites.
One other footnote, interesting thing about that site, and we were curious as we were out there and kinda climbed up onto one of the rockout properties. It has a beautiful view of the Long Island Sound.
Yes, it does.
Particularly, you know, the school, and even if it had a second floor, again, be a great, great site and great location for a school.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, then, um, what I'd like to do, if it's okay with, with you guys, is we have public comments and, um, maybe you can join us, join us up here. Uh, and, uh, and any members of the public who, you know, would like to address us on, on this topic are welcome to come up and make comments or ask questions. Do we have, do we have a sign-in sheet? I mean, we, I think we just take comments at random.
There is.
Okay. We'll do the sign-up sheet, but we can also take other questions if people want to.
Okay, as secretary, I will, um, introduce the speakers and, um, remember, I guess it's three minutes, and I'll put my hand up when we hit two and a half. Our first speaker will be Mary Jordan from Six Weather Belt Road.
Good evening.
Good morning.
I am the president of the Norwalk Federation of Teachers. I represent professionals and paraprofessionals here in the district. I'm also a Norwalk taxpayer. I'm the mother of four children who went through the Norwalk public schools. I am keenly aware of the costs of the various solutions discussed tonight, but our children really need adequate schools. Norwalk families with children contribute to the energy and the life of the city, and we really need to tend to them carefully. Our schools are overcrowded and old. Our teachers and students do the best they can in portables and tiny classrooms. Um, we don't need a study actually to know that overcrowding affects the safety and health of our children as they trip over each other in packed hallways and slip and slide up and down the ramps of portable classrooms that are snowy or in the rain. Um, overcrowding adds stress to all kinds of interactions within the school environment and impacts academics on many levels. We knew all that before the facility study, but what we know now that we didn't know before is that these wonderful Norwalk children will continue to be abundant. We also know that there are better solutions than putting art on a cart or squeezing in a few more here and there into tiny rooms or adding more portables. We, I encourage you to really investigate solving the problems of overcrowding carefully in the schools. Carefully is a word I want to really emphasize. Opening a school in South Norwalk would be a milestone worthy of celebration if it were done carefully. Success will only come there with a sense of, a good sense of the history of that community, involving widespread community involvement, especially with regard to programming, um, with regard to design details, uh, possibly with regard to the replacement of those tennis courts. If it were done, um, it would also need excellent funding. If done poorly, it would be such a lost opportunity, a badge of shame, the weight of segregation and discrimination hanging around it. A successful school in South Norwalk could represent forward-thinking people, uh, of our city. It could represent progress of social, social justice here. I urge you to use caution, to listen carefully to community members in the planning of all of the schools, but especially if South Norwalk is selected, um, should that, such a thing be considered. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Our next speaker is Sue Haney.
Hello.
Hi, Sue.
Sue Haney, uh, I'm a resident of Norwalk, Southern Christopher Lane. Uh, you've all done a lot of hard work, and I really wanna thank you. It was an interesting presentation. I just had a couple of things. One of the things, I think there's probably gonna be more community engagement for the, um, for the plans, especially for the middle school. I know, um, it's one of the things, uh, as a Wolf, in the Wolf pit residence, I'm not quite sure how that ends up working with the two middle schools, uh, side by side. What happens are these K eight magnet schools, is, uh, what happens to Nathan Hale? Um, is it a six-eight magnet? Uh, how does it affect the neighborhoods, the other neighborhoods? How does it affect parents, future parents and taxpayers? Um, and so I'm, I would hope that we would have more community engagement. I noticed on the report, it did say there would be broad-based community input, so I'm hoping that that's still coming. Um, I also was just a little concerned because they were talking about it being a new approach and an ideal, and I just, um, so I, that was another thing I'd just like to know more about. Um, the other thing was, is I agree with Mrs. Jordan, um, and her, about her, um, the school in South Norwalk, that's a long time coming. I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing that happen. Um, another thing I wanted to bring up is we send a whole bunch of money to the state of Connecticut. As we all know, we get back about six cents on the dollar. Um, and I'd like to see if possible, if the Board of Ed, the superintendent, the common council, the mayor, all of our legislators, everybody, Republican, Democrat, independent, can join together and ask for a bigger slice of new money from Norwalk, that Norwalk's generating from new apartments, a new mall, new retail. Not old money, not money that's being, that would be taken away from another town, new money that we're generating now that we can put into schools now, that we can, that we wouldn't be taking away from anybody else. And we need to have a, a voice and a loud voice to the state asking for that because we're getting twenty-eight, twenty-nine percent back on this, um, and the taxpayers is covering, are covering the rest. It'll take us ten years to do something that should be done tomorrow. And I just think we need to ask the state to help us. Um, we are a priority district with a lot of needs, and we need more money from the state. And we need more, all we really want is more of our money back from the state. Um, and then one other small thing, um, I know the high schools had to be admitted from this study, and that, um, made sense, we couldn't afford it. But at the very least, and I do think this might be just a, um, a maintenance issue, an operating budget issue, and not a capital improvement, is power washing the front of Norwalk High. It's just really so dirty. As I stand in that light, sit in that light and look at it, it's, um, it was washed about three years ago. We had been quoted, I was still on the board at the time, and at that point, someone was telling us it was three or four hundred thousand dollars, and it was done for fifty. And it was so, it was such, it looked so much better for about two years, and now it's dirty again. And it's the, it's the high school for half of the city, and it's where people drive by, it's where new parents drive by, it's real estate agents drive by there, I drive by there, and it's really dirty. It needs to be cleaned, and I thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Thanks, Sue.
There is no one else signed up, but if anyone else would like to speak?
Anybody else wanna comment?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, my name is Darlene Young. Uh, live at one hundred, one hundred San Vincenzo Place, and I just thought that, uh, I'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to just say a few words. Uh, first of all, that was a very good report. I'm, I'm glad that I attended this meeting to hear more about this, um, project. And I agree with the two ladies, um, who spoke about the school in South Norwalk. Um, it is a long time coming. Um, on one hand, I, I think it's essential to the community, but we have to also consider then what happens on, at, with the other schools. Um, it's segregation versus integration, and, and that might sound kind of crazy, but I think what happens when our young people leave fifth grade, and what are those schools that they're going to be going into? Um, are they going into their district schools, or are they going to go to all the other schools within the, within the city? Um, but I think that when, and if this happens in South Norwalk, we have to, um, really get community input and be very diligent and determined and specific about what this school is going to look like. There are a lot of model programs in the state and in the country, such as the Amistad and all those other sorts of things that we really need to look at if we're really gonna make an impact on these young people, um, moving into other, into the middle schools. Because what you're talking about now is taking the pre-K to five, and, and they're all minority students that are then going to be going out into the other school districts, if that makes much sense to you. But I think there are a lot of model programs out there that can be utilized, and I would love to see this be a pre-K to eight, to eighth grade. I think that makes a lot more sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just add, Darlene, that, you know, under state law, you know, that school could not be a, an all-minority school. Uh, under state law, there would be a requirement that at least twenty-five percent of the students speak Caucasian. Go ahead, Mary Beth.
Hi, Mary Beth Becker. Um, I don't really have anything prepared, I just kinda have a lot of questions. Um, I applaud the use of data, I'm thrilled to see the use of data. It's so refreshing in the city to see the use of data and long-term thinking and planning, so kudos. Um, it's awesome. Um, I agree with all the speakers about being for school in South Norwalk, but making sure it's done carefully, and the key is listening to the community and listening some more. Um, I guess my, my questions go back to kind of big-picture trends, and I think there's a lot of stuff that's changing in the world, like with, um, you know, the younger generations and not wanting to buy houses and living in walkable communities that are more urban and just, you know, knowing your assumptions can only be, or your regressions can only be as good as your assumption. So, kind of, how is data changing over time as these young millennials that we keep talking about enter into their childbearing years? It might look very different than when all of us old folks had kids, so. Um, and then how does that fit into all of this development? Should there be some schools in our downtown? If that's what young people want, they want to be walking their kids to school instead of driving them. So, should we be thinking about schools in our downtown as all of these new developments are built? Another question about demographic trends is, um, once again, these young millennials with all of their college debt and not buying cars because, you know, they're rooming up with all of their friends, um, how does that then apply to the, um, assumptions about private school? Are people gonna have money to pay for private school, or are all, are we going to see even more kids in our system because people don't have the money to pay for private school like maybe they had before? Another question I have is kind of what, I'm hearing different things about neighborhood schools versus magnet slash choice schools, so I'm just kind of curious about as a district or as a city, are we trying to build more choice, trying to build more neighborhood, or a little bit of both?
Could I just say a word about that? Um, so, uh, the Board of Education in March, uh, March first workshop session is going to return to its, um, consideration of the strategic operating plan, okay? Um, one of the, this is a three-year plan, which will guide us, set direction for our school district for the next three years. Uh, one of the goals of the plan is to create more choices for, um, good education choices for parents. But our definition of this is that choice begins with the default choice of a good school in your own neighborhood, okay? And then you have, if you want it, based upon your student, your child's needs and, and interests, you have the opportunity to choose something that might be more specialized, not for everybody, but again, conforms to your child's, uh, needs and interests, um, in the form of an intra-district magnet. And I think the plan calls for, um, we have three such schools now, uh, they are not very robust, okay? So, to some degree, they are magnets in name only. Um, but our plan calls for making them more robust and adding a fourth, uh, choice over the course of the year. So, this is not an all-choice system of schools, and by conventional definitions of choice, it's fairly limited. Uh, but nonetheless, it would create some greater opportunities for, uh, parents. But I, I don't think we can feel that anything should take the, the place of a good default choice in the school that you're assigned to.
Cool. Um, I just have another point or two, and then I'm, I think I'm done with all my questions. Um, just in general, kind of Connecticut, losing young people and the affordability issue, so kind of how does all that play into all of this? Um, and, I mean, I think that's all for now, but I, I, once again, thank you for using data and being forward-thinking, and I think there's a real opportunity to position Norwalk as forward-thinking and vibrant and innovative and all that good stuff. And, um, anyway, thank you.
Thanks. Yeah. Thanks, Mary Beth. I came in late, sorry. I know the first couple of sessions were more intense on the data, and I don't know how much of that came in twenty or thirty minutes.
Yeah, no, this is a high-level overview, not that way.
But I, I guess the question does come up is like, how, how do we re-gauge our model from this, the stuff you showed us in the first couple of sessions, where I believe you did show demand for private versus public school?
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, what can, you know, and you also talked about apartments shifting from childless to bearing children. And, and how do we, you know, you're, you're not gonna come back here every year and dust this thing off for us. How do we go forward as a board and, and manage that? What, what do we look for?
Yeah, as part of our report, we have some really good multipliers for Norwalk, and I think, uh, just to kind of back up and touch on one of the questions on the millennials, I mean, it's a great question, to be honest with you. Um, looking at from the private development side, that our company does a lot of work on it, you know, people are trying to figure out, you know, now that TOD is really taking root in Connecticut, um, towns and cities are going through zoning processes, studies, seeing what the right densities are, but ultimately, what we're seeing, a lot of these TOD plans, Norwalk as well as others, is that...
Which is transit-oriented development.
Transit-oriented development, it's all stationed along rail, millennials don't wanna have cars, they wanna be burdened with cars. Um, what we're seeing now, the product types that are being offered and, you know, largely being built or moved forward, or even what's being allowed by as-of-right for zoning in these, um, it's really limiting the number of bedrooms. So, as you look at the millennials are very desirous and young professionals are moving into these, um, types of, of mixed-use apartments, being able to travel to wherever, Stanford, New York, or beyond, um, a lot of the unit splits don't really, right now, allow them to age their, develop a family there. So, when you're gonna be looking for those three-bedroom units on what you would have in suburbia, um, they don't exist and they're not being planned around right now. Everything is really being focused around those studios ones and twos, so, um, a lot of that hasn't caught up with the development community, which then in turn impact the schools yet. I know one of the issues, probably why it hasn't, is the struggles of saying, well, if you're gonna allow this greater density, once you get into the threes and some of these have affordable housing components to it, oh boy, here comes the cost of the taxpayer. So, that's a local struggle that everybody really needs to be able to work their way through, but, um, being current with all the planning trends, it's just, we're not seeing that type of unit as part of these newer developments, but I think the day may come, depending on what the But I think the day may come, depending on what the millennials choose, that's not my generation, but it's interesting, you know, being around them and hearing what they're desirous of as they begin to age. If I was able to get ahead of that curve, I probably wouldn't be projecting enrollments here and helping you guys out, but I think it's awesome.
You'd have a $10 million house and...
Yeah, I'd be doing something a little differently, probably be spending my night out here. But either way, I actually, I think it's, I, it is a, it is a great question. Looking at the private school trend...
So then one thing that we could look at is if we notice any kind of a trend where these new developments start adding additional bedrooms, you know, I mean, if the millennials' market starts demanding that, then the builders will start building it. So that would be a trigger indicator for us, that if you see the bedroom counts going up in new developments, then we should be alerted that, okay, this is, this is what you were talking about, this is starting to happen now.
Yeah, Brian, even when we're done in our report, we've based on such a large dataset, as things are coming through the planning and zoning process, and you see new units, anything in addition to what we have in our report, you can get a good indication of about how many school-aged children are going to show up, and in what neighborhood or what attendance area they're going to have that impact. So that can give you guys a really good planning tool, because it does take about three to five years for something to ultimately get approved, there's going to be the whole battle of court, and whatever or not the unit disposition is, it's built and then it's occupied. So you have some planning time for your space where you could either reprioritize some of your extensions or alterations building project-wise, or maybe look to have a project so you're not caught. The kids are there, we don't have space. That's, that's not what we want to do. Private school enrollments, that's a good question. I mean, are millennials going to send their kids to private schools? I mean, I don't know. I don't know. All we know is the trends in the states are still very strong in Fairfield County. There was a little dip overall for the entire region at the Great Recession, but it has since rebounded. I mean, I think the biggest one that we're seeing overall throughout the state of Connecticut is looking at the niche of the parochial schools in that it just doesn't make a whole hecka lot of operational fiscal sense for them to have all these many separate parochial schools in given communities. There's all sorts of dialogues going on in other communities of potential consolidation of those schools, and whether or not everybody would follow the consolidation plan, or if there would be a return of those students into their public schools. So when I think it happens, it's going to happen pretty much all at once, because I saw in the paper where in New Haven County, there was a couple of schools, I believe, Milford was one of them, where they went ahead and consolidated a couple parochial schools, and I imagine that's going to have an impact on the local enrollments there as well.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Could I just mention something to the board? So I mentioned to you that at your next workshop meeting, which I believe is March 1st, we are going to be revisiting the Strategic Operating Plan in the hope of getting a draft ready for public vetting with stakeholders sometime in the spring. Remember, you discussed at your retreat, having these two, you know, community forums on either side of town to talk about, you know, the how of the plan, okay? How do we implement these strategies? How do we achieve these goals, like closing our achievement gap, providing parents with more choice, and having good facilities for all of our students? One of the things I would like you to think about between now and then is what commitment can the board make to this plan over the next three years that we could incorporate into the Strategic Operating Plan? So the consultants have recommended to you, if you look on page 65 of the report, they've essentially recommended to you that you build the new schools first, in the first phase, right? And then there are three schools, West Rocks, Jefferson, and Columbus, that are recommended for complete renovation. And then we have another 11 schools whose needs can be met over the next decade through capital improvements. All right, that's one way to approach this. Another way to approach it might be to say that we're going to build one new school in the course of this facilities, of this Strategic Operating Plan, because we will over-enroll without it, right? It's a necessity. And we're going to renovate one of the schools that need renovation as new during this period of time as well. The other policy question for the board, you'll recall that when Mr. Hamilton put together the capital budget, he had a number of placeholders in it, but there also were some projects defined. The concept, however, now, and what we now know, is that we don't want to do capital projects at the schools that are slated as renovation as new, because when they are renovated as new, they're eligible for state reimbursement at the 32% level. Whereas if you perform part of the work through the capital budget, they're not, there is no reimbursement. So we need to have a plan around this.
Financial plan, yeah.
And a financial plan, but also a plan that sequences these things in a way that we don't end up spending money that is not reimbursed, because every time we do that, we will limit the scope of what we can accomplish based upon what the city can spend. And I also just want to point out that while Jefferson is one of the three schools that is recommended for renovation as new, the plan also anticipates returning Jefferson to its former size as a 400-student neighborhood school, and getting rid of the portable city behind, behind the school. And so in order to do that, you have to have capacity in other places. You have to create capacity in other places first. So there are a number of variables here, but again, I would like you to think about in the context of your upcoming Strategic Operating Plan discussions, what do you feel it would be appropriate to commit to, to accomplish of this plan in the next three years of our, of our Strategic Operating Plan?
Thank you. All right, any other comments, questions? Oh, okay, this was very helpful. Thank you very much for taking the additional time. Obviously, there's a lot of work that the board has to do, because we need to fit this into the Strategic Operating Plan, not the other way around. But this gives us the data information we need to work with, so thank you very much for a nice job. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Please adjourn, thank you very much.